Today. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
I understand that Councilmember Wong will not be here tonight. So Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Here.
Councilmember Taltz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Here.
Mayor Udi?
Here. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each regular meeting at the City Hall, the Crow Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. It's also available on the city's website. Public comments. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the council on items not on the agenda, but be aware that pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda. Please note that all comments will be limited to two minutes and will be timed by staff. City Clerk Baker, do we have any public comments for this evening?
I have not received any requests for general comments.
Thank you. Move on to motion to wait for the readings. Do I have a motion to wait for the reading?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Taltz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Would like to move on to new business. Item number one, the adoption of a resolution implementing a mandatory vaccine for employees represented by the San Marino Firefighters Association. Can we have the presentation, please, from Mr. Flarsky?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, my name is Steve Flarsky. I'm the city's designated negotiator with the various labor groups concerning a vaccine mandate. The staff report lays out in detail the chronology of events that brought us here to eat this evening, but the Reader's Digest version is that back on August twelfth, the L.A. County Department of Public Health issued an order that required persons in the classification of paramedic to have a proof of vaccination or obtain a limited exemption based on either religious belief or medical condition by no later than September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. The city reviewed the order and determined that the order applied to members of the San Marino Firefighters Association, who are all required to maintain paramedic status. That includes firefighters, fire engineers, and fire captains. Earlier this year, the Public Employee Relations Board, which governs the bargaining and negotiating for public agencies and public unions, had determined in a separate case that the issue of requiring a mandatory vaccine was a management right, that there was no need to negotiate the actual decision to mandate a vaccine. However, the board held that the effects of that mandate had to be negotiated. The effects included such things as what would be the alternatives to vaccination, when the mandate would go into effect, and any other effects that an association might bring to the table. Beginning shortly after the county order was issued, the city began meeting with representatives of the Firefighters Association. A total of five meetings were held up through and including October fourth. The parties were at what is called impasse. We were so far apart that there was essentially no hope of getting an agreement. For instance, the city had proposed that employees that were not vaccinated would be separated from employment, that we could not accommodate as a substitute for vaccination, masking and testing, unless that particular person had a religious exemption or a medical condition exemption. The Fire Association was requesting that instead of having a sincerely held religious belief to qualify for the exemption, that a sincerely held personal belief would qualify for the exemption. Again, the city disagreed with that position. And there were a number of other issues that the city and the association were at odds on. As a consequence, on October fourth, the city verbally declared impasse with the association. On October seventh, the city provided written notice to legal counsel for the association that the city and the association were at impasse. The city has a impasse procedure that's been in effect for a long, long time because it predates what is called fact-finding, which is required now by the government code. The first step in the impasse procedure is to have advisory arbitration. It's a rather unique step. It's different than mediation, and it's a step, quite frankly, that I've not seen in forty-one years of doing this type of work. It also requires the association to request advisory arbitration within ten days of the declared impasse. No such request was ever submitted by the Fire Association. Under the current government code, fact-finding was put in place approximately twenty years ago, and that fact-finding request must be made within thirty days of a declared impasse. No such request was put into the Public Employee Relations Board to have fact-finding by the association, which means that the city has now exhausted the meet-and-confere process, has now exhausted the impasse process. And Government Code Section three thousand five hundred and five point seven allows the city council to unilaterally implement its last, best, and final position once the negotiation in the impasse process is concluded. Before you, you have a resolution that would enact a citywide, or not citywide, I should say, city COVID vaccine policy that applies to members of the Fire Association effective on November twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-one. A valid medical or religious exemption is not, or I should say, I misspoke there, absent a valid medical or religious exemption. Regular testing and masking is not an option to having the mandatory vaccination. And employees who fail to comply with this vaccine mandate by November twenty-third would then be separated from employment. Resolution also directs the city manager to issue notice to all employees as to the effective date of this mandate, so that any remaining employees who are currently unvaccinated have the opportunity to become vaccinated before the mandate is put in place. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. I'd like to ask council if they do have any questions. Mr. Taltz, do you have any questions from Mr. Flarsky?
So it will go into effect on the twenty-third, but if that person is not vaccinated, they will have sufficient time to get vaccinated?
No, the mandate goes into effect on the twenty-third. If an employee between now and then shows proof that they have a shot in the arm, either the one-shot J and J or the two-shot regimen, the first shot or the second-shot regimen, then the city would accommodate them completing their vaccination.
Okay.
So that they would remain employed.
Okay.
If that employee does not have a shot in the arm as of Tuesday, November twenty-third, we have to assume that there's going to be no intent to comply with the vaccine mandate, and the city would go ahead and proceed with termination proceedings.
Okay.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, any questions to Mr. Flarsky?
I had one question, sorry, concerning the, it's mentioned in the staff report, and I think you went over it briefly, but the L.A. County Department of Health this August, prior to our action as a city council and regarding all city employees, actually had a specific rule requiring COVID vaccination that applied to paramedics in practicing in L.A. County. Can you explain that to me?
Well, it was an order that came out from the L.A. County Public Health Department, and the order, I guess for lack of a better word, is akin to a directive or a mandate, and it included healthcare professionals, and within the definition of healthcare professionals, it included those that were performing as paramedics. So by extension, since all of our employees in the association are certified paramedics, we believe that the order applies to those classifications within the city. And as a consequence, they had to comply, or the city should have complied by September thirtieth of this year. Because of our obligation to bargain the effects of that mandate, we have now had to engage in that process. That process has taken us time beyond the September thirtieth date. So we are now putting in place a city policy, which is a result of the county order, and it'll be by virtue of the city policy that we move forward in the future with future hires, future employees, and dealing with anybody that's not vaccinated.
And you're talking about specifically to the Firefighters, San Marino Firefighters Association members?
Yes. The miscellaneous employees, but I call miscellaneous employees, those that are not in the police department or fire department, not sworn, they have agreed to this policy through the meet-and-confere process. The unrepresented employees, who are not represented by any association or union, have the same policy in effect. So by virtue of implementing the resolution tonight with Fire Association, the only remaining group of employees that is not subject to a vaccine mandate currently would be the sworn members of the Police Officers Association, and we are currently going through the impasse process with that group.
Thank you. And one other question. Is it, my understanding correct, that firefighters, in order to be, I don't know whether it's certified or licensed, they go to a special school, and that school also requires vaccines, including the COVID vaccine, in order? So new hires, for example, would be coming to us fully vaccinated?
I can't address whether or not the current paramedic schools require as a condition of attendance that one be vaccinated.
Okay, perhaps this is better answered by Chief Roy. Thank you.
Counsel, good evening. Any paramedic firefighter that would be hired by the San Marino Fire Department or any department that in L.A. County would have gone to a paramedic school that requires a vaccination panel, including COVID vaccination. Part of the training that paramedics go through is a visit to the hospital, a clinical portion, and there is not one hospital in L.A. County that will accept anybody in clinical without a COVID vaccine today.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief. I appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Flarsky. No more questions?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you. No questions.
I have no questions either. Would like to open it up for public comment. City Clerk Baker, do we have any people from the public that would like to comment?
I have not received any public comment cards for anybody in person or any raised hands on Zoom, but I did receive, I just received an email prior to this item that I do need to read into the record.
Okay.
This is from Ms. Joy Flores, and it says, "Good evening, City Council. As a resident and mom of four children in the district, I strongly urge you to reconsider the vaccine mandate for our fire department. We know this will set a precedent for the police and even our school district. If we carry down this path and vaccine mandates take effect for SMUSD, there will be another mass exodus of white families. Not to bring race into this, but the demographic of our city and considering the political makeup, most families who oppose the mandate are Caucasian and have multiple children involved in sports. It will be a giant loss for our community to lose even more incredible families. This might not be a big deal with the layoff of only one firefighter, but to us who live in this community, it's a big deal. Please listen to the residents and do not impose this mandate. Thank you for taking the time to read this. Joy Flores."
Thank you. Are there any other comments you received?
I have received no other comments.
I could bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, any thoughts on this, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I do feel strongly that a requirement of public servants to do their job should be to be fully vaccinated because they deal with the public, and it is a matter of public service. They take an oath to protect. And in some, in the sworn instances, not all of them, we do have other city employees that this impacts. However, I feel strongly that in the course of everybody's responsibility in all our departments, they deal with the public, and it is their responsibility to act accordingly and not put the public members, particularly our most vulnerable residents, which are children and our elderly, at risk. And having a vaccination, along with many that they would have gotten perhaps to go to school and be trained and do their job and go into a hospital setting, I think that they need to be vaccinated, and it is a requirement, also should be. Because in our city, we have residents, I believe our vaccination rate is well over ninety-six percent, which is phenomenal, and I would think that that would be reflected among our city employees and should be. And I understand that there are concerns, but the risk of having unvaccinated members attend accidents, homes, come in and service the community, puts them and others at risk that is too great in this current situation. And protecting each other, protecting our community, is part of their professional responsibilities. So I believe that we're right to proceed with this, and it is a disappointment that we have to part with an officer, firefighter, excuse me, and a paramedic who has served our community proudly, but I believe it's part of their duties, and we should proceed in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taltz, do you have any thoughts?
No, I join her comments. Plus, I don't think, given what the county's order is, we really have much of a choice at this point.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I concur. Thank you.
I also have no other comment to concur with what has been said. Do I have a motion, please?
I will be glad. I move to adopt Resolution Number R dash two-one dash two-eight, implementation of a mandatory vaccine mandate for employees represented by the San Marino Firefighters Association. And I shouldn't say I will be glad to. This is a painful decision, but it is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Taltz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Like to move on to the consent calendar now. Do any council members wish to pull anything from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion, please? I'll move to accept consent items number two and three. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes, and congratulations, Brad Knight.
Still coming. Yay. Councilmember Taltz?
Very happy to see you, and we'll miss you in our future meetings.
Councilmember Taltz?
I'll just wait till the correction's done. Yes, absolutely.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes, joyfully.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I can move on now to written communications. Do we have any written communications or public writings for distribution? Seeing none, then we will adjourn the regular meeting after eighteen minutes to the special meeting. So I would like to call the order to the special meeting notice for today. And since we already did the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call, we can just move right on into the meeting. Special meeting agenda was posted twenty-four hours prior to this meeting at the City Hall, the Crow Public Library, the Stoneman Building, and on the city's website. Would like to move on to new business. Item number one?
Excuse me, Mayor Udi? I believe we do need to do roll call once again.
Okay, please.
Again, Councilmember Wong will not be here tonight. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Here. Still here.
Councilmember Taltz?
Present.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Here.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Like to move on to new business. Item number one, the adoption of a resolution submitting preferred district choice on behalf of the City of San Marino to the Los Angeles County Redistricting Commission. Can we please have the presentation by City Manager Marlo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was placed on your agenda tonight at the request of Vice Mayor Jacobowski, who, as you know, is our representative to the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. She serves and represents in our city's interests. As you all also know, there is much talk going on right now about redistricting. Those are the drawings of new lines to impact a variety of different electoral offices. One of the matters at issue is the drawing of the supervisory district lines, and the COG governing board, of which Vice Mayor Jacobowski is a part, has had several conversations about the matter and is considering weighing in with an official opinion. They have given her homework to poll the council and understand what the council's position will be on the matter, and so with that, I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Jacobowski.
Thank you, Dr. Marlo. As was shared, I am your city's representative to the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. We are an active member with over thirty-five entities, and we pay an annual fee for the work that is done through the COG. Some of the work totals over hundreds of millions of dollars. The major issues covered through COG include issues like homelessness, housing, the metro, the Gold Line, water issues, and the like. We are having a special meeting tomorrow, and I have been charged through the agenda to come back with just two responses with the COG's position. And the reason I'm mentioning it as the COG's position, it will understandably carry a fair amount of weight with the CRC in making the final filing by December fifteenth. So all I am asking at this point is, do we wish, as a city, to continue to be represented with two supervisory districts? If you look up at the map, you can see where Supervisor Barger's cities are listed there, and they're within District Five. You can see L.A. City on that. There's parts of it that are also covered with Supervisor Barger. If you can please flip to the first district with Supervisor Solis, City Clerk Baker, please. Thank you. You can see that is also part of the Council of Government cities. So what the COG is wanting to discern is, do we wish to put the cities together to be represented with one supervisor or keep it mostly the way that it is right now? If we go back to Supervisor Barger's map again, I'm sorry, you can see, not real clearly, I'm sorry, these are the maps that were given. It includes the Antelope Valley, and one of the options is to break off the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government cities from the Antelope Valley and have that be its own district. We, as a COG group, have already sent a letter saying we do not want cities split, with the exception of L.A. City, and that's for any city within L.A. County. Currently, there are some, and we are strongly in favor of whole cities being with their own district and separate. We do not wish for L.A. City to be part of the COG group in what we are recommending. So that has already been sent, that the L.A. City would be our request to be separated from the COG cities. So with that, it really boils down to, do we want to stay the way that we are? Or do we wish to consolidate to become part of a more COG-related district, if you will? If you have any questions for clarification, I can attempt to address those.
I'd like to open up for questions. Mr. Taltz, do you have any questions?
No, but in addition, I sat through the discussion regarding the mapping and what they, with the determination at that time and what they were looking at, it was at areas that had significant relationships, and I told the grouping that San Marino would like to stay with South Pasadena and La Cuenada and Pasadena because of the relationships that we have with those communities. I realized we're kind of dealing with something different, but when our, and the question I have is, the resolution suggested two things. Are we doing away with that resolution idea now completely? Two options.
Yeah, that really is at your discretion. I know that Vice Mayor Jacobowski has specific direction she is looking for. We gave you the option of the resolution in case you wanted a formal declaration of endorsing one map or the other. You aren't required to do that, so it's really your decision to make.
Well, because that's a different, really, it's a different conversation, because there we were asking to choose between two potential maps. One, I find offensive, and the other one is what we discussed before.
I would just say that the COG's, this has been moving quickly, and so I think the original guidance that was handed out has morphed as the days have gone on, and I think Vice Mayor is getting additional emails every day about what we need, and even in the one day since we posted this, what they're looking for has shifted a little bit.
Well, then, is, Vice Mayor, are you looking for directions with respect to just the, the question as to whether or not we're, we should stay with the present or change to allow for getting rid of non-COG cities?
I think even a little bit different from that is the purpose of the COG is to address these major issues that most cities have. San Marino is a little bit different, similar to, say, a Bradbury, in that we don't have direct impact from Metro. We are most fortunate to not have to face a housing or homeless crisis, and we do have in common a number of the water issues with the other cities. Some of the argument is that we want to keep the two supervisors because it gives us a better voice on the Board of Supervisors, and then the opposing opinion is, no, we want to be together so that we can have a stronger voice. It really is an individual preference. We obviously have been with Supervisor Barger. She is certainly extremely familiar with our community, but at one point, she will term out. Prior to her being elected, there was Supervisor Antonovich, who represented our city for many, many years. So on one hand, it would either be a pro or a con. If we consolidated, we don't know if it would become Supervisor Solis's or Supervisor Barger's district, but there could be potentially a learning curve, if you will, if it is Supervisor Solis's in getting to know our city better.
There has to be a rationale for the change, and that rationale has to be based upon considerations in the latest census as well as political considerations. It always apply for something like this. Was there something, did, and COG's not making that decision ultimately. It's this group of people that are doing that.
Right.
I don't think that there were significant changes in the census data to promote a change, at least in District Five. I mean, my preference is to keep the two and not change it, but that's typically my preference over in anything, so don't break what's fixed.
That will be our first issue. Are there any other?
No. I was just trying to get an idea as to what we're being asked to consider.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, do you have any questions?
I have a lot of questions. These maps are not very helpful, in the sense that I have no idea where San Marino is in some of these. It's difficult to see from what we were given. I also sat in on and listened to some of the meeting. So exciting, and I felt like I was out of my league because there was quite a bit of discussion about statistics because of the census and racial and other disenfranchised groups being underrepresented or being split, and so that's a target that
And so that's a target that very much is the focus of a lot of the redistricting efforts. And similar to Councilmember Talt, I don't think that we've had a radical change in our area that would require us to change or express an opinion that we would like to be somewhere else or realign this area in some other way. However, I am not an expert in this, nor have I heard a lot. I personally would trust Supervisor Barker and her advice in this regard. She is very familiar with all of her constituents, which is huge, and has done an outstanding job for our own small community despite having such a large geographic area. So I would follow whatever her direction is in this regard and hope that we will stay the same. I think that's best for our particular community. And not engage with joining other areas in a different reorganized district. But I don't know because I cannot at all make out A, B, C. I kind of get D as a whole new thing, but cannot begin to make out where we are in these. Those are my thoughts.
Just, I requested that same information because we could not tell from the, the matters in the, and I was sent a, a, not a different map, more detailed map. Was that not sent to the entire council?
Are you speaking about the email that I forwarded out?
Yes.
Yeah, it was sent to the entire council.
Okay, because in there, just so you know.
I don't know what it was.
The only one, yeah, put aside E and F. But looking at A through D, D puts us in, in District One. We would be one of the most northern cities in that. We don't want that. Because we don't have those same relationships that they, that they were looking at. A, B, and C do, but B is probably the best.
S being most similar to what we have now.
Yes.
Thank you. That is helpful. And I did not, perhaps, look at it. I thought it was the same as what was in this packet.
No, you, you had to press on and it, it took, you could actually tell because I suffered the same problem that you did in that regard because when I looked at D, I couldn't see if D had, what district it adds in Marino.
Okay.
And it was, it was a hundred and eighty degrees different from what I had expressed to the actual decision makers in the end as to what we wanted.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions to yourself?
No, but I, I think that the preference of COG will be weighed heavily since we represent well over thirty-five cities. And again, this is more to promote the common interests of our group. And I do concur with the belief that Supervisor Barker has served us well and the old adage, if it's not broke.
Okay. So you answered the question I was going to ask you. Thank you. I'd like to open this up for public comments. Has anyone from the public wished to speak? City Clerk Baker?
I have no request for comment on this item.
Okay, then I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, can you give us your thoughts?
I will look toward staying with the map that is closest to what we have now and keeping ourselves with Supervisor Barker, which I understand from our immediate discussion. Despite being challenged with these maps here, that B would be the best to keep us in our present state.
B as in boy?
B as in boy.
Unfortunately, I will not be weighing in on that tomorrow. It is merely if we want to stay as two separate districts with Solis and Barker, or if we want to combine for one district and move the Antelope Valley as a separate district.
So map, I guess I don't follow what the.
Where, where the Council of Governments is coming from, if you see us as this horizontal swath, it, it is a decision-making group together. And the question is, do we want to bring it under one supervisor as our recommendation from the Council of Governments, or do we want to keep it as is? There are some beliefs that consolidating to one gives us a greater voice with that one supervisor. There are others who believe they, they have been with Supervisor Solis, who has represented them well, and they also do not want to change. It's really a preference just on the oversight of the cities that are part of the Council of Government. San Gabriel Valley.
So I would recommend that we continue with our current supervisor representations and not support moving anybody to a different district.
Thank you.
If that's the answer that you're going, that you're interested in.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Talt?
Yes, I, I join in that. And, and one of the issues that, that I am having is, first of all, some understanding that, that having one consolidated district gives us more voice when we, when you'd have only one representative out of there. And yet, under the present, we'd have two representatives out there that are representing interests that are similar based upon. So I, I don't understand the logic by COG, but I, I, I know that's, I've sat through those meetings before and logic is sometimes missing.
And it was brought forward by a work group with different cities being represented, so.
But the concern I also have, I'm all, I, I don't want, I don't want it to change. I want San Marino remaining District Five and us having two districts. The problem is if we have two districts and they move us into, into Solis's district, that's, but that, that's not ultimately going to be up to COG.
Correct. That is not what our preference is in, in general with COG. We are saying we either stay exactly as we are or we consolidate into one. So when you say being moved, if the preference is to consolidate into one. And I know it's quite close. Some of the Southern Moore cities like Diamond Bar and La Puente and Industry are more in favor of consolidating into one. They have a lot of the big construction projects, a lot of the overpasses and the like. So they would like the thought of the other cities joining with them as they move forward with these major projects. I think we are just of a different needs, if you will, in our city. We, we don't have a lot of the needs that many of the COG cities do.
Okay. My preference is to keep two and don't change the representation of who represents the, the, the cities generally. So District Five remains the same. District One remains the same because we're right on the border. And all they have to do is someone feel that they need to make a change and where that change?
Concur. And again, this is merely a recommendation from a large body. That's all. We do not have the final say in it. I concur.
And I do as well.
Thank you. And the second question, and this was again for the Southern Moore cities. Do we want to move into a different district or stay as we are? And I think I'm hearing consensus, we want to stay as District Five, correct? Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion, please?
Do we need a motion? Or are we just giving direction?
Just giving direction. I think you're good with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I need to jump in. We had a technological issue that we don't quite understand yet. There was an email received earlier today before the deadline from Mr. Donovan Janus, who wanted to public comment on the vaccine item. Thankfully, he sent a second email wondering why we hadn't read his email, and we did manage to get that one. So at the advice of our city attorney, I'd like to ask City Clerk Baker to read that email into the record.
Thank you. Mr. Janus's email states, "Good evening. Due to death in the family, non-COVID related, I am unable to attend tonight's council meeting in person. I've given you the data that shows vaccine efficacy becomes negative after eight months. I've given you the data that shows the risk of anybody being infected by a first responder is infinitely small. The recent data from Pfizer showed that more people died in the vaccine group than in the placebo group, with a three-hundred percent increase in cardio-related deaths. While it did have one COVID death less, that actual risk reduction out of forty-two thousand people was statistically insignificant. The vaccine does nothing to reduce transmission and may actually increase it after eight months. As such, there simply is no moral case to be made anymore to mandate a vaccine. All the data, both on efficacy and adverse effects, have turned against the vaccine. This should give you positive, excuse me, before effectively convicting, convicting a person of losing their livelihood. There should be enough reasonable doubt for you to vote no on tonight's measure. Our staff at the CDC has admitted vaccinated people can transmit the disease. What recent data does staff have that shows there is any scientifically proven benefit from taking the vaccine? The agenda talks that the city has no liability if there is informed consent regarding the risks. Considering we don't know how many boosters are needed, it is not possible to consent to this item in an informed manner as each booster increases the risks as well. OSHA yesterday suspended implementation until the court makes a decision. I suggest at least waiting until the legal challenges have completed. The agenda reminds me of the famous line of Jurassic Park, "Your scientists were so busy wearing, if they could, they forgot to ask themselves if they should. Even if legally you may be in the clear, please keep in mind that, keep in mind, it is the government's, your job to protect our freedoms, not take them away. If you are wrong, you open up the city to lawsuits, and we all know it's the residents that pay for damages through higher taxes. The agenda quoted this Supreme Court case, Jacobson v. Massachusetts. First of all, Jacobson never took the vaccine, and the decision constantly refers to reasonable measures. Losing one job for something that actually does not protect others is not reasonable. It may take another year, but I am confident that Jacobson v. Massachusetts will not be upheld with COVID mandates because the vaccine does not actually protect against spreading and thus harming another person. Finally, considering the SMPD negotiations will take at least another three to six months to resolve, in the interest of HR fairness of treating employees equally, hold off on making a decision until that case is decided. You cannot undo taking the vaccine, and there may be better health measures available in six months regardless. All your options remain open by voting no. Please follow the latest science and data and vote no. Donovan Janus. Thank you."
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? City Clerk Baker?
There are no there.
Mr. Talt, looks like you have some.
Well, yeah, do we need a motion for reconsideration?
Well, that's not agendas for the special meeting. That was agendas for the regular meeting. So the regular meeting has concluded. You've read this statement into the record during the special meeting. To the extent that the council wanted to reconsider based upon this information, you could bring a motion to reconsider, and we'd have to call another meeting to address. Okay. Decide again.
But we're legally okay, even though this was read in the, the
Wrong meeting.
The subsequently?
Yes.
Okay.
Then, Mr. Montes, may I adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
I'd like to adjourn the special meeting. Forty-three minutes. Thank you.